All right, I'm gonna call order the Hancock County Commissioners Meeting for January 7th, 2025. I'm also gonna welcome Commissioner Sam DeBella to the commission space. Thank you for being here. I'm gonna call for nominations for Chair for 2025. I go forward, Commissioner Clark. Any other names? Call those in favor. My button. Testing, okay. This will work. Okay, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
I move to accept the agenda as presented by our conditions six UTM approved the town of Hancock's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County. And six UTN approved the Hancock County MOU for the ACO between the town of Hancock and Hancock County.
Motion made, would you recede it? I'll second that. Motion made, was that town Sullivan, not Hancock, because Hancock is on the agenda, I thought. I'd be mistaken. Did you say Hancock?
Yeah, I did say Hancock.
Sullivan. Channing Sullivan. Town is Sullivan. Motion is amended by Sullivan, you understand that, Sam?
Yeah.
Motion on the floor is to approve, David Edwards, Sullivan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment this morning? We welcome public comment, everybody can have three minutes to discuss any topic they'd like. Is there anything on Zoom? Hearing none, we'll move to approval in the minutes. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes of the December 17th, 2024, special meeting as presented.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the minutes until December 27th, 2024, Commissioner's Special Meeting is presented.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unorganized territory. Miller, you on the morning?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I move to accept and file the UTs that the reporters present.
Motion made to accept the managers reported, do I recede it?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on managers' report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The New York Vegas Bridge issue, Miller, where are we?
I have heard nothing new from him except for the email that was attached to your to your to your packet, so I think we're still waiting on him to see if he will accept the ATVs and the agreement.
Let me ask you, Miller, though, there was seemed to be discussion back and forth, at least in the the email that I remember, where they felt like if some of the language could tweaked a little bit, it could get resolved. Is, are we opposed to tweaking the language, or what's the story?
I guess that's up to the Commissioners if we want to tweak it or not. I, I think we need an easement, if we could get the easement. I, I think it's important to get some kind of an easement, so that we have the right to use that road. But if it's not gonna be open to the ATVs, I'm wondering what the point is. If it's not gonna be open to the ATVs, we can't use the TIF money to fund it. So if it, maybe we could include it that it's open to the Acadia Area ATV Club.
Yeah, I mean, so that's seemed to be one of the things he was looking for, right? Was for it to be some kind of association with it?
Yes.
And that's what occurs with several landowners, right? They, you're required to be a member of the club, you have a permit from the club to access the correct?
And, and we work with the state every year on these ATV grants through these clubs, so it might
So are you proposing that we somehow incorporate an agreement that we, that would
We, we use the, we use the Acadia Area ATV Clubs, or any club. I don't know that we need to restrict it to the Acadia Area ATV Club, but we could include any organized ATV club approved by the county Commissioners.
So would it require a written agreement? In the
I don't know, couldn't we just include that wording in this, in the easement then?
That's what I'm wondering, that's how you want to address it, put it right in the easement? Okay, who's gonna wrap the language for the easement, Miller?
Well, I can run it by him and see if he can get them to do it. Let's put it back on them if we can.
Sounds to me like a plan, because otherwise we're kind of stuck.
Yep.
Okay, then we'll, we'll look for draft easement back from you at some point, okay?
Okay.
Moving on, we have animal control issues with Louisville, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the town of Louisville's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the town of Louisville's 2025 MOU for the ACO between town of
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the town of Hancock's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the town of Hancock's MOU for an ACO between the town of Hancock and Hancock County.
I second that.
Any more, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the town of Goldsboro's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County.
I second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the town of Goldsboro's MOU for the ACO between the town of Goldsboro and Hancock County.
I second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to approve the town of Surrey's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to approve the town of Surrey's MOU for an ACO between the town of Surrey and Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the town of Brooklyn's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the town of Brooklyn's MOU for an ACO between the town of Brooklyn and Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to approve the town of Sullivan's 2025 ACO agreement with Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And move to approve the town of Sullivan's MOU for an ACO between the town of Hancock County and Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 To see that this is continuing to grow.
Yes, it certainly is. Anything further for unorganized territories, Miller?
No, thank, no, thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Airport manager.
Good, good morning.
Morning. We have your report, anything to add to that?
Nope, that should do it.
I move to accept and file the airport's monthly reports presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And it looks like the UMA needs to extend that lease agreement a little longer, they're running behind still, so it looks like it's April 30th, I believe they're looking at.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, yeah, that's been, that's been working out fine. Yeah.
Miller, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the humane leasing amendment as presented, authorized the chair to sign on Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, Lee Warren?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Emergency management. Andy Allen's money. He said he would not give it all, he would not give it all. We have this report, what's your pleasure, Miller?
I move to accept and file the reports presented.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good morning. Good morning, too.
Welcome aboard.
This is our field administrator, Tim Rich.
Great day to rest today, I guess we do part-time hires, thank you for us.
All right, I'm gonna move to approve the hire of Sean Kilman, Lincolnville, Maine, as part-time as needed corrections officer at pay grade nine A, with no benefits effective one eleven twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna move to approve the hire of Ryan Gibson, Stetson, Maine, as part-time as needed corrections officer at pay grade of nine A, with no benefits effective one eleven twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm gonna move to approve the hire of Alex O'Hara, Goldsboro, Maine, as part-time as needed corrections officer at pay grade of nine A, with no benefits effective one eleven twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we are one person sure, one basically sure, hoping that if he's trained up, one of these will fill that
You'll also be to a quarter, is there?
Yeah. And the intern has worked out perfectly.
Moving on to the sheriff. With the resignation deal, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I move to accept the resignation of John Stanley effective January 7th, 2025, taken for service in Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd also like to recognize, move to recognize the retirement of Robert Fettrich, effective December 31st, 2025, taken for service in Hancock County, twenty-four, uh, twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item C, two weeks ago, we approved the appointment of three new hires at the, at the Sheriff's Department. Just curious about an update as to the status of those, we understand that one of them is no longer with us, all done?
I wouldn't worry, as it's gotten done, we rescinded the Commission offer for employment before in my garden. So he had another start at the academy. And as such, Austin McDonald and Wyatt Lord have started their employment with the academy.
Okay, one of them started phase two of pre-service yesterday, is that correct?
That is not correct, no. One of them has been accepted into the Basic Law Enforcement Training Program, which begins on the 21st this month, at the full-time police academy. And we, our intentions and our beliefs as well is that the second will also be accepted in that program. We will, we will have further direction on that later this week from the academy.
Would it, the second one, when add, would it be in the same, the same date?
It would be, yes, they, they have two academies a year, so they could, yes, they run at the same time. So that is, we have, again, as I said, Wyatt Lord and Austin McDonald have started with us, our belief is that we'll be attending the Baker of Justice Academy January 21st.
Very good, thank you. Have anything else? Make sense. Sam, this is the maintenance director, this is
Order, you're welcome aboard.
He's got the best spirit in the academy.
Anything to add, you mean?
Uh, no.
I move to accept and file the papers that the reporters presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item B, I asked to have this put on this morning and whatnot. We finally got a deed to the new property that at the Hancock site, we officially now own that site. And that site is four acres and is comprised right now of four buildings. Where intent is to put a fifth building on the site, which is going to house the Emergency Operations Center and hopefully a public meeting room for meetings and conferences. What I would like to do this morning, by quote, is to assign the management of those structures on that site, so that somebody is officially and as a practical matter responsible for the maintenance and scheduling, whatever it may be. Now, we have, it came to us with names like the file room and the planer building and so on, but as we were going through the building process, we assigned a lot to those. Now, those on the committee, remember that we had the log cabin, which is the first building, is building A. We're going to build a new facility between the first and the second building, that would have been B. Now, the, the, it's changed now, so the new EOC will be the first freestanding building as you win, which means the log cabin now will become the second building. So I would like for us in the future to recognize that we have five buildings and that we identify them in sequence, in sequenced, so that the new EOC meeting room is building A, log cabin would be building B. What is now called the file room would be C, the large steel storage building would be D, and the last building down, which is referred to as the planer building, would be E. So in the future, if we're talking about those, we'd be talking about building A, B, C, or D, or E. Just, just by general consensus, if we could make that happen. Second of all, I'd like to, I'd like to have somebody officially designated as being responsible for managing and everything from coordinating maintenance to scheduling use of the buildings. Now, the EOC, of course, is the, comes under the auspices of the Emergency Management Director. But the public meeting space next to that isn't necessarily EOC, Emergency Management Space, that's more county space, but they share certain facilities such as lavatories and kitchens. And it would only make sense that we give the management of the public meeting space to the EMA Director, so that if somebody wants to schedule a meeting in a public meeting space, they coordinate that with him, and he makes sure that there's no conflict with something going on in EOC, that they would be needing shared spaces for. And so I would like to entertain a motion to appoint, to select the EMA Director as the manager for building oh, excuse me, I gotta back up. Building B, which is the log cabin now, will become the Emergency Management's full-time office space. As Andy will be occupying that space with his staff all the time and vacating the space here for the court hours. So having that, I would entertain a motion to select the EMA Director as the manager for buildings A and D. Moment, will John create that motion? Anything to add, Lieutenant?
Uh, yeah, I'd also add that the building A will also have the ICC and ITC backup.
No reason to go without that, come under the auspices of the EMA Director, as far as obviously they don't have opportunity to access to buildings without the EMA Director's involvement, this too.
Yeah, plans for each side, separate outside entries as well.
I'm gonna move to the side manager, the EMA Director of the Hancock's A, the Hancock site.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, I would like to make a motion to select the maintenance director as the manager of buildings C, D, and E. And any access request would go through him, he would be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of those three buildings exclusively.
Which buildings again?
Just with the CDs, you know, the, the CD, which is the traditional file room, the large steel warehouse and
The circle grounds as well.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's a given, of course. Like, put that in your motion, John, and, and the grounds. Can anybody expect any, any more?
All right, I'm gonna move to have the maintenance director be the manager of buildings C, D, C, D, E, as well as the grounds of the Hancock County site.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Anything further on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item, we didn't budget anything in the maintenance practice budget for the Hancock site. But there are miscellaneous issues arising up there, don't require Commission approval as far as contracting, but they do require Dennis to perform some work and to spend some funds in making that happen, as example as he had to vice surprise the other day to, for the furnace in building B. And I would like to to take out $25,000 from our community broadcast, our community benefits account. Now, that account is kind of the funds that we get from wind power up to 16. And right now, there's, I think it's a little over a million dollars in that account. And I'm late to withdraw at this time, 25,000. And Monica, would you set up a separate account?
Apparently, we'll need to. Yeah.
I'd like to.
Well, no, we need to set up probably a set of accounts just for the Hancock site.
And we don't want to be, we don't want to have to prove it every time you spend, you know, fifty dollars.
I don't know if it should even be within maintenance, it almost feels like it should be its own.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to ask you, and that's how to work that out. I would just like to see Dennis hands access to, you know, to money out, doesn't have to use his maintenance fund to support them. So basically, gentlemen, we just withdrawing $25,000 from CBA, Monica is going to set up a fund in one month for Dennis to have access to when he does work on the Hancock site.
The only thing that, my only comment on it would be I feel at a certain point, once the construction is kind of done, gives her place, there's a balance down there, she can get back over. I don't want it just to be left as a slush fund, the payments over there. It's to be, it needs to be part of the budget.
In my mind, there's gonna be a continuing, continuing service needed.
You envision a separate department for the Hancock site? So we might, we can either move that into that thing, or as, as John says, put it back in the CBA and then raise those, but that would
Yes, yes.
We wouldn't raise those till next year's budget, so
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, I wouldn't surprise me, John.
Being left over.
That's because, we wouldn't surprise me that 25 will be here. I mean, we're looking at things right now, like putting in, taking out the old light bulbs and putting in new LEDs in building C, little things like that. Those guys are adding up to hurry as we, he needs to have somebody do an, do an assessment on the roof on building D. So anyways, I wouldn't be a bit surprised, I agree with Monica, that probably this won't, won't get us through the year. To get us, and if we had a separate account, we can identify what the Hancock site is costing us.
Exactly.
I think we probably, was probably set up a transfer sheet maybe for the next meeting, to make that 25.
Do we need transfer sheet from CBA?
I don't know.
No.
No?
Nope, I mean, it's just by approval, you can spend that account, so just remove that, set it up however it works. You okay, John?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move to approve the withdrawals, 25,000 from the Community Benefits Account for the Stetson and Hancock site, to be authorized by the maintenance director.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Well, there is gonna be a continual operating expense coming from this property. Just right now, we're looking at transferring utilities like electricity, if we already got an eating account and we're moving water over, and I'm gonna be looking to getting some internet, there's monitor site as well. Doing it incrementally, I think is a good way to begin, and as things begin to emerge and expand, we'll keep the board apprised of those expenses and other requests for money may come along, may follow.
And if he has a request for major work in a contract, there will be a separate approval process for us. Any further discussion?
and other requests for money may come along, follow.
And if he has a request for major work in a contract, there will be a separate approval process for us. Any further discussion? Give a second on it. You second the motion, of course, listen, sure. Hearing the all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you have a request as to what you want, Dennis?
Uh, yes, next is, we're entertaining a request by the Elsworth Snowmobile Club to house their trail groomer at the very end of the building, E, which, as you may recall, this is, it's an open area now, we may do something about that. It provide, would provide them direct access to their trail maintenance area and get, and get their machine, which is basically S U V with wags on it, you know, out of the weather. I guess they have some storage now, but it's, it's a windy area, blows, proves to be unworkable. Any further questions? Mr. Miller, this is the, the trail master for this club is here as well. And has provided, this is the, this is the area, hopefully everybody, but John, you recalled it, that's the spot at the end we're talking about. And it faces that open area behind the train station. And it's my feeling that this is a benefit to the county as well.
Center block building?
It is. The trust is over. And, but, the future, it's unknown, but disposition right now lends itself well to some of this type of use itself. We're recommending it. And we've also put together a, a release of viability form that they would sign to, to absolve the county of any financial responsibility in the untoward activity or event.
How do you feel about it? I'm kind of abstaining. I'm a temporary club, and so I really shouldn't have your comment or vote. Do you, Dennis, do you see any downside to?
I really don't. In fact, to have periodic eyes on that part of the building is a benefit to us right now. We don't have, it's not stabbed and nothing's happening there, all we have is traffic going by.
And right now, we're gonna say it's only for this year? It's, it's a continuous thing, you know, what's that?
We maintain on a yearly basis, and it would be upon your discretion. We couldn't leave it there year to year. It would be great for us to be able to have something undercover. Would be upon your discretion.
I entertain it for the year to see how it goes.
Approving on a provisional basis?
Anything else, Jim? All right, I'm gonna move to approve the request for the Hancock County Snowmobile Club to house their snowmobile trail groomer in our side of building B of the Hancock Site, Hancock Site for the remainder of, whatever, 2025.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing the all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that I have a conflict, and I'm abstaining. Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Dennis, anything else for maintenance?
No, that is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have a signed copy of the waiting?
I just gave it to her.
Very good thinking. I C C, good morning, Bob. Good morning. Stand this.
Welcome, send them a tissue, come down and check out the area to you.
Rather than announce a timetable, it's quite different, the atmosphere is a little Do you have the report in front of you, gentlemen? Anything to add to that, Bob? I'm going to accept it for now, the I C C, the reports presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the report? Hearing the all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else, Bob? Very good thinking. We have bills and warrants from the treasurer's office here, which we're gonna move to accept and approve the bills and warrants as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing the all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else from treasurer's office, Monica?
No.
We move on to the commissioners. Gentlemen, A, as of this, the agenda this morning and whatnot, something I put on, and I'm not sure, when I go back and I look at the motion, at the, yeah, the motion that passed back then. I'm not, I don't want to prompt this. That's where I retire. This was, well, it was my last year, I guess, but I don't recall this, but, but it doesn't make any difference. I guess the bottom line is, gentlemen, that basically, this is just, this is not working. I'm gonna give you an example. In preparation for one of the agenda items today and whatnot, I wanted to go in and I wanted to determine what the cost would be of the deputies continuing the new ones that we hired, if they weren't able to get in the academy in a timely fashion. Was to do that, of course, I knew their hourly rate, but to, for me to understand some other issues, I had to, I had to find out their age, because one of them was, was twenty, which many had to have college credit hours. If he didn't, he was gonna have to get into the full-time academy and so on, if that wasn't possible. Anyway, and I was trying to compute the cost of that. And this policy prevented me from, A, determining, first of all, that which one of these was a twenty-year-old, knowing that one of them had gotten done, but didn't get stabbed, or whatever the case may be, was that a twenty-year-old or no? I couldn't find that out. In our effort to determine the cost, monthly cost of keeping them, I needed to know the level of health insurance that they had, I couldn't have that. And quite honestly, I mean, in the effort to try to do my job, this policy is just hindering that, and it's just, it's way too prohibitive for us when we, you know, we're trying to do just basic verification and research for employment matters. Quite honestly, I don't know why we even have this, but if you think this is hardly on there, then these two can caveat somehow that allows commissioners to have basic information. I mean, we have a moral obligation not to penalize, just sent their peruse to everybody's personnel file. We also have a legal obligation not to disseminate any confidential information, and we should comply with that, those moral and legal obligations, but at the same time, it should not, this policy should not prevent us from going in and getting basic data that we need in an effort to do our job. And I would like to propose, either we repeal this policy in its entirety, or we put in a, some kind of a caveat that allows for access on as needed basis. Well, that's part of it for me, is just that it's never been an issue before, so kind of, not sure necessarily it could be important, so like, how much of a problem it is. Well, it's happened, this was, it's happened, it's happened three years, I guess. I've tried to get the same information, because of the policy, and honestly, then the other day, I forgot about the policy, and it reminded me quickly. So this is a problem, but, John, just not being able to know the age of, you know, our employees, we have a situation or reliance that, I, it's gotta be a way for us, you know. Just a minute, I'll get to the other side.
Isn't there a provision that allows commissioners to vote, releasing?
Well, Michael has gotten some information from the county's private attorney, John Haywood, which says that information can be accessed by, by a vote. And that is one way to address it. The problem is, is that when you, when you have a meeting today, and meeting in two weeks, and you wanna prepare for that meeting in two weeks, so that you could have information in front of you to, you know, to intelligently discuss that, then you're gonna have to put that whole matter off, because you can't get access to the files until you have another
What role is, go ahead.
Well, I guess, yeah, of course I have it. I mean, I'll just mention that obviously that is the drawback, but the attorney did mention as well, that there are certain things that when you start, such as age and other issues, you start getting yourself in a position where you are opening yourself up to human rights and other potential discrimination issues, not that you're not entitled to, as he indicated, you're entitled to be able to see that. So, I mean, it's a fine line to walk, and the policy right now does allow it. So I guess for all of you, the question would be, is, you know, if you need that information and the department head won't give it to you, then do you wait two weeks? And that's just a matter of the fact that you couldn't get your question answered by a department head or whatever?
Well, currently, like, something, you know, we don't have an H R person right now, but normally, if somebody want, needed information, goes requesting information, personnel information, would the commissioner be able to go to the H R person and, like, I, I guess I'm kind of wondering what role the H R would have in all this if we had one in place right now?
I mean, part of the issue here is the limit that we are kind of still dual system. So if you look at some of these policies, especially this one here, talks about how the clerk is the keeper of the records and all that, and back then they were. Now, that's kind of transitioning to the clerk's office, and then, now it's become part of the, you know, the, the down-time H R. But in and of itself, I, and I think this has happened before with other H R people, they're not gonna just give out that information unless you're entitled to see it. And Commissioner Clark is correct, under this policy, I would agree, I mean, they can't necessarily just release it to one commissioner coming in unless, as a group, you've talked about it. I mean, I think that would be the safe position that an employee would take, because they would say, well, it says right there that, you know, you can't access that unless, you know, the board and then conducting of other things. So I mean, the three criteria there. So that would be the issue for, I think, whether it's a clerk, whether it's B, whether it's H R, they would say, well, yes, you have a duty and responsibility, but did you get approval for the rest of the information to do that? Now, if it's public information generally, which is limited, then obviously, they can give out public information to anyone that's public. But generally speaking, a good portion of it, you know, really wouldn't be open to the general public.
See, and once again, I disagree with John's way he's providing this, because commissioners acting alone is commissioners taking action alone. They don't have the authority to act by themselves, they must act as a committee. It's ridiculous to say that one commissioner can't do individual research in preparation for an agenda. That you have to, I have to have your consent to invest, to do, to do research, that's ridiculous. I'm not acting alone. I'm simply acting as one commissioner and fulfilling the duties.
If I may, commissioners, I'd like to be able to speak on behalf of the union. So, in preparation for seeing this on the agenda, first of all, speaking here on behalf of Patrol Union, but is also representing this for dispatcher communications as well, and I know Corrections has discussed it as well. Looking at the existing policy that was signed in 2014, you know, Commissioner Clark referenced earlier, just a few minutes ago, about how it's a legal obligation and a moral obligation that you would have, you know, not to violate that. And that's specifically what that policy outlines, in that, in that, in that last line right before it's bulleted, with one, it says, "Now therefore, the board of county commissioners hereby," I'm sorry, just above that, "whereas the board feels that it is fair and appropriate to limit the possibility of unnecessary access to the county employees' personnel files by individual commissioners." Commissioner Clark outlines and says that he's, you know, it's the board acting, right? And then, in the exact same sentence, he says, "one commissioner," or a single or I. You know, if it's the board acting as, by means of a vote, that's one change. But we would object, and we would strongly stand against an individual commissioner having free rein over personnel files. Those files, you know, as Attorney Hammer, I was touching on, touches on things like insurance paperwork, F M L A paperwork, you know, certain disciplinary records. Now, certainly, the existing policy would allow you to do those things if agreed upon by the board in a meeting and when, when it's voted upon. Or at times, you know, as it states for individuals that you would do a performance valuation on, or, you know, in agreements proceedings if it was current. You know, the, the policy, I think, directly was created to address and allow you guys the ability to view personnel file, files when appropriate, but restricts and holds you to that same standard, that moral obligation that he references, to abide by any other standard that we would expect. And that is, that is the position of Patrol Union. I, I know, like I said, Dispatches Union is, their representative is here as well, but we would strongly object to just free rein over this. We feel that there is confidential information and personal information, i.e. the personnel files or employee files, and if it was so pertinent that it could be voted on by the entire board held in a meeting, and therefore, it would be a more unanimous decision and really meet that moral obligation standard by having everybody on the same page and not individual basis where, again, there'd be free rein.
Okay, your textings are noted, okay?
Thank you.
Nothing in what I said and whatnot advocates for free rein to all of us. I, I said earlier, whatnot, we shouldn't be going and just randomly perusing those. What there needs to be, though, is on an as-needed basis. Now.
On what basis?
As needed, as needed basis. A good example is that a new hire for Patrol Limpay has to be 21 years old, or he has to be 20 with 16 college credit hours before he can get into training for pre-service, which is the right time. And if he doesn't qualify for pre-service because of his lack of credit at his 20, then he has to go to the same kind of academy. Well, the question there to be asked, how old is he? And if we're not given that information, then by the department head, and requires research to get that, we should have access to it. Now, I asked, before we hired last week, I asked for the ages of the, of these three hires that didn't get it. And so I, between meetings, I've been here today, I simply wanted to know how old, because I'd heard a rumor mill that one of them was only 20. Which one was it? And we have a discussion this morning, this was on the agenda, with the code as to, does he have the 60-hour college credit hours? Anyway, that's the issue. So it's, it's only asked for information because it was needed in research. I wasn't asking for her to give me the files, I could send them and pass through it. Now, I'd suggest that if, if any feel better, that any information required from the personnel file must be in writing to the H R director, which has a written documentation now for the need for that information. And so that request would state why it was needed, and would be a basis for defending ourselves if somebody wants to complain later that we didn't properly access the personnel.
I guess my concern, or just, is, he has needed basis doesn't really define what you actually have access to in personnel. I mean, does it, him even have access to any disciplinary stuff? Does it mean you have access to just the, I mean, because... Does it mean you have access to just the, I mean, because most anything you're going to be researching is going to be just higher expense costs, correct?
Never know, just knows. I mean, I only had like, no, I had like, what, three questions, four questions, you know, that I wanted. You know, I mean, I kept asking for substantive information, but just three or four related to, you know, the age and the cost of this new hire. So, I mean, but you don't know. And the problem with this policy is that it doesn't give you anything.
Well, how would we get, you know, if we were on board, how do we have any accountability to know what dissemination, what permission disseminated, what you see and have some record up in case it does get used in some way?
Well, why does it bother you that a clerk has free, unfettered access to your personnel file? Can we as county commissioners and whatnot, who have to stand up and face the public daily and whatnot?
I don't love that anyone does the job of this, but.
I know, and that's the case. Everybody that has access, has given access to that file, has a moral and legal obligation and whatnot, what they do with it.
And the thing that is here is, I'm not asking for anyone sitting on this board or anyone in the clerk's office, but we know that elections come around every so often and sometimes people that get elected don't always act the same. We had someone here who was in the financial office years ago, I'm sure you remember, who we weren't super fond of or trust. And I just think that even for us as dispatches, when we do criminal history checks for officers, we have to have all that certification, to document what we do, to document why we're doing it. We have to have that, that information documented, that we are disseminating it, that we are accessing it, what reason we have for it. We have to have a case number and an open investigation. There should be some method of, if nothing else, knowing, so that there's a method of making sure that nothing is done in a proper way, where we hold people accountable if it is them.
Do you oppose having the HR director as the overseer of the information being disseminated?
As long as there's a process involved that will document what is accessed, when.
Okay, so.
That's my, that's my opinion.
Let's just talk more hypothetically. I want some information, I've filed a written request to the HR director. There's three items. She's okay with two of them. The third one she's uncomfortable with. She has the ability to take that to the county administrator. If he says, no, I think you're being overly cautious, that's okay. If he said, I agree with you, then it's up to me to go to the board to get that third, you know, the individual to get that third.
I think it's, my personal opinion, it's reasonable to have some sort of process that documents what is accessed, when.
That's what I'm saying.
And then have, if there's any type of objection, maybe even with the person who's being looked at, be notified that it's happening. That, so that it can be, if there's an issue, we can say, hey, no, we're not in favor of that, then bring it to the board.
Joe, do you want to speak for this?
I would love to. First of all, it's just been, I'm not prepared to speak to it, so that's what I'm going to speak to. With that said, I was just brought to my attention that this is on the agenda over the weekend. I haven't had a chance to look into it, but I guess it begs the question on a couple of things. I guess why, you've explained some of the reasoning, but you have department heads, that's, that's the boss, that's who has access to it. I'm not quite sure, these guys have made valid points. Again, I'll look into whether it's something that opposition would be, you need to negotiate it or not, because it would be a change. Based on years of experience, I don't, and again, the commissioner thing, I know select board members, now maybe, maybe there's a difference. Again, I'm speaking somewhat out of ignorance, I haven't had the opportunity to look into it. Select board members aren't allowed access to anybody's personnel files. Trying to find a polite way of saying, you know, there is a way that you stay in your lane, you have a department head, you have what it is. Billy, you brought up going in on the hiring end. I would make the assumption on the hiring end, they're not employees yet and you would in fact, you approve whether they're hired or not, so I can't imagine you not having access to that information. But moving forward and Commissioner Clark knows that, even with the police, there's certain periods of time when an employee's hired, what you can have access to, what you have the right to. Then they're employees and it all changes. So I'm not quite sure, again, why the commission is short of hiring and terminations, because the termination, if we grieved it or, no, not even if we grieved, if we didn't grieve it, right? It still has got to come to you. You are the only ones that can hire or fire. Short of that, I'm not quite sure why you'd need access to personnel files, because it would be up to the department heads to run their departments. So I guess, again, you somewhat answered the why for me, but I don't see the issue with the hiring and the termination. It's all this stuff in between. I think you're looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist right now, or you might actually be going into a lane that you don't want to be going into and creating bigger issues for yourself. But again, I've just been made aware of this this weekend and there was real concern on what is this about? I mean, each unit had reached out to me multiple times and I said I would, I was not setting to be here for the next meeting. But here we are. So, so again, I don't understand. You have department heads, they're responsible for that. At the end of the day, hiring and firing, that is your domain. I cannot imagine, but there's a process like anything for requesting information. Sometimes I request information and I'm told, you know, you don't have the right to that. Sometimes you're right, I might not have the right to that. Sometimes I might. I just don't see where you're going with that.
Okay, Joe, some noted.
Something else I would just point out on the new hire, then, on our applications, we're not allowed to ask their date of birth anymore for legal reasons. And I would suspect that if you're looking to see what they're claiming for insurance, that wouldn't be a real good thing to get out there with it, being hired, depending upon what they claim for insurance, because that's probably grounds for lawsuit of some sort.
The last thing that I'd like just to bring to your attention is obviously, as Mr. Cucconi said, in reference to select board members, they don't have access to personnel files. The legislatures also don't have access to personnel files and they're also elected officials, obviously, as you know, because in the eyes of the law, they consider public for consideration of access. The last thing I would bring your attention to is Title 30, Section 102, the county commissioner's authority. So in that, it says the county commissioners have the final authority of operation while county offices, elected appointed officials, except in certain circumstances, et cetera. Then the very last line of statute, the county commissioners must act as a board and not on an individual basis in exercising authority. And once again, we are just asking that the status quo stays where the board has to exercise authority in it, or as a whole, so that everybody is aware of the underlying circumstances or what their intentions are.
I do just want to address that real quick, because, because again, the whole part about the individual, I mean, I don't even think individual until I look into what it is. I mean, as a whole, without termination or hiring. That's, I know you have access in the right, because that's your job, hiring and terminating. All that other stuff in between, I would even, until I look into it more, I would even say definitely, not individually, I mean, I'm not even going to entertain that. I would even be suspect as a group without termination or hiring. In the agreement process, then you have access to that. I do, I, the word.
We're not objecting to the current policy that stands. We just want it to be as a board so that it's a group decision and that it follows the guidelines. That's, it says in the initial policy, that's why it was created.
Let me just give you the worst case scenario. This did not happen, no reason to believe that it would have happened, and I'm just in preparation for and trying to do what I think is our job and whatnot. We had potentially a new hire. That new hire, among the three, was only 20 years old and didn't have enough college credit hours to get into the pre-service, which is the prime time. But ironically, he could go into the full-time academy. Now, the full-time academy starts the 21st of January. And if he didn't make the 21st of January deadline, then he would have to go in August. So now you have, and we'll say his date of birth, his birthday wasn't until July, we'll say. So now he doesn't qualify for the January pre-service platform phase two, he doesn't qualify for April phase two, he doesn't qualify for June phase two. And so now you have an individual who can't even carry a gun, make a rest, wear a uniform or anything and whatnot, for six months, sitting here waiting within the academy. And we're paying him $1,200 a week and we're paying him anywhere from $1,300 to $2,300 a month in health insurance. And so if, as we discussed this, we wanted to get a sense of what is this going to cost the county for the next six months to retain this guy? Is it worth it? And that discussion with the sheriff and his staff is that should we continue to employ this guy? That's where this discussion, worst case scenario, would have gone to then. Never was I proposing that we as a board were going to terminate your employee. It was a discussion on how long are these guys going to be sitting down there doing nothing because they have no authority? Is that going to be an issue? And if so, how long is that going to be? That's where this discussion was supposed to go to then. It's just a back and forth understanding from the sheriff's department on the status of these employees.
There was nothing wrong with that discussion as we had.
Sure, I get.
As we had already, the reasoning, I mean, obviously this is a different discussion now when we get to the personnel files, right? Our discussion regarding the status of employees, that was fine. The personnel files, this worst case scenario that you bring up, that's why we have a couple of things in place, right? That's why we have the conditional offer of employment. It's also why we have a probationary period. And that's why we structured it the way that we did, accurately so, to be in the most protection and be physically responsible. In addition to that, the other side of that that I would say is Commissioner Clark, you keep bringing up this worst case scenario and you wanted to do this research, but conversely, at the same exact time, what would have been easier for you is to simply say, hey, what's the circumstances? How old is this guy? How many college credits he has? But you didn't. Instead, you decided that you wanted to go look at the personnel file. That's what I'm saying is that the need to immediately jump to that personnel file is not needed. That's why it should be at the discretion of the board as a whole, because if you wanted that information, you could have said, hey, what are the circumstances outlined in this person?
Didn't you get a request from Michael and whatnot before you hired these people? We wanted to know their address, we wanted to know their age. It was, we never got that.
That's not true.
Well, that's what I asked for. I asked Michael for biographical information on these people so we could understand how old they were at the time of hire, what their address was, to see if we had to make special exemption, exception for out of the county, and we didn't get that.
So Commissioner, I just.
Joe, just a minute.
Yeah, just give me the Luigi here.
Joe.
Give me the Luigi.
Anyway, when I didn't get it from you on the first time.
I didn't get a request for it.
Well, I didn't get the information either.
Why was the employee hired?
And?
Why was the employee hired? I'm hearing all of this stuff after the fact. Why was he hired?
Give me why.
You hired him.
Well, the majority of the board did.
Correct. So I guess, and again, I'm not, you're making very good, I'm hearing everything you're saying, but again, I'm going back, you already had the ability to have all that information. You hired him. If somebody failed to provide you that information, you have whatever control you have over your department heads to proceed however you see fit. But again, I'm at a loss because you hired the guy now. So the worst case scenario, I guess the scenario, if there was questions on whether to hire him or not, you shouldn't have hired him until you got the information you were looking for. And again, I don't want to go, because that's me going into your lane, right? And I don't want to go in your lane and tell, oh, this way you get. It sounds to me like, why'd you hire him? If you had reservations, you shouldn't have hired him until you got the information you were requesting. Again, I understand the original, but I, I think you're looking.
Okay, Joe, that's enough. Are you currently comfortable with the fact that if you need information for personnel file, that we could get that as a result of the majority vote at this board?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the way it stands. In the future and whatnot, if we have information we need from this, we will bring it to a meeting. And depending on the sensitivity, we may have to have an executive session, but we'll get this information as a result of the majority vote at the board. Okay?
And I would assume a personnel matter would in fact be executive, just for the, since we're here having this conversation, that would. Regardless of what it entails, it would be.
That's why I brought it up, because getting approval would probably come in the executive session because of the information that we're asking. Sam, you got a comment?
You still have the opportunity to talk to a department head. Does that department have the ability to filter out personnel?
Oh, it had to.
So that's.
I talked to, I talked to department heads, you know, sometimes weekly.
Could be an avenue, though.
It could be.
Short of gathering.
Depending on the cooperation, yeah, depending on the cooperation, it could be. All right, I think that's the way we're going to leave this, that the policy's in place, that if we need information, that we think is critical enough, then we'll bring it to the board and get the board. Let's move on. Item B.
I'd be reviewing the warrants. I'd like to continue with you and the sheriff, that's the plan we've been saying. Move to appoint Commissioner Wabacher to review and sign warrants for the sheriff.
I hear the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Item C.
All right, and I move to set the standard mileage rate for the use of a vehicle at 70 cents per mile driven for business use for 2025.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item G.
I'm going to approve paying travel expenses for commissioners living over five miles from the county seat.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item M.
Now, go to approve the permitting the treasurer and county administrator to issue checks up to $1,000.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item A. Item F.
I'm going to approve the 2025 stray animal tracks with small animal clinic ass presenters.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G.
And kind of related to H, women's going to take that? That you ought to, you shouldn't be. Well, since I have that one meeting or.
It usually ends up being you as you're proxy.
So maybe Sam, I don't know if you're interested in that or not, you'd be the representative to the risk pool and. and County Commissioners Association Board. Of course, Michael would act as your proxy if you could. Is that something you'd be interested in?
Is that something that you would, the ease that you would tend?
See, they're doing it in, so a lot of them are still done by Zoom, but there are some, like, they're having
like a month in a meeting like this week. So that in person, and they do have a couple other meetings a year where you have to go to Augusta.
I tell you, the easiest way is back when we did it, was to go to Michael's office and sit down on Zoom and attend that way.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. So what they'll do is if you agree to it, I've got to notify them like as soon as the meeting's done today of who the members are, and then they will send you email links to Zoom, which you wouldn't have to, but they will send it to your email address, commissioner email address, and you can either do it there, or whatever your preference is. But usually it's a couple hours a month, normally on Wednesdays in the mornings, like nine to 10, and then 10 to.
The risk pool is our, is our liability and physical insurance. But the MCCA is on itself insured. So the risk pool is the insurance company. So you'll have a risk pool meeting, and then you go to your MCCA, your county commissioners meeting afterwards, but they're really two separate groups.
Apply to employee problem with accessing personnel.
Well, if, if the commissioner gets sued, he'd have to turn to his risk pool for coverage, yes. So we're looking for representative to represent Hankott County.
I'm going to approve Commissioner Sam Devella as Hankott County's risk pool board member for 2025. I just select Michael Crocker as his proxy.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next, uh, what? This really is related, so it shouldn't be used while Sam consists to be the representative to the County Commissioners Association Board, which is like hand in hand with the risk pool.
So your motion is to, what I'm seeing, representative of the MCCA and Michael is his proxy, right?
Yep. Uh, to approve Commissioner Sam Devella as Hankott County's MCC, I'm sorry, MCCA board member for 2025. So I could pick up as his proxy.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's always been you, Michael.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to move to appoint Michael Crocker as Hankott County's point of contact with the school.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right. We're going to go through the executive session. We're going to go through the executive session as permitted by, I don't want to say Title 14560 for union contract negotiations.
Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
We're now back in session from a executive session. Nothing to report, except we're progressing with our negotiations on, with the union, on the Christians contract. Moving on, we have any comments from the county administrator?
Uh, just two.
So would there be no action?
Yeah, no action on K. Basically what you were saying, right? Because there's nothing else.
Oh, yeah, no, right. No action on K, because we're still negotiating.
So, yes, actually, two items I have here. One, I think I forwarded on to you a couple different emails while, one email you got directly from John Stein, but there was a resident who had forwarded an email on saying the commissioners should be invited to, I guess, the public workshop tonight at Elswood City Hall or Council Chambers or whatever. Is anybody planning on going? And two, am I supposed to attend that? I mean, I didn't know anything about it until yesterday, so, but I just want to make sure that you're not expecting representation.
I might go, just out of interest.
All right. So Monica might go on.
I think somehow they want to imply that we somehow share the cost, the, 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 the cost of whatever it is. And, you know, because of my relationship with the state, it's, I guess a grasp, you know, like getting support. I don't blame them for trying, but.
I'm just going as an interested.
Now, I tell you, today's the seventh, and if they don't have purchased a piece of property by the fifteenth, they're stuck with the survey room probably. So I don't know what's going to happen in the next week. But they have until the fifteenth, because if they don't, their, their deadline is passed, they're going to be either no courthouse or they're going to have to go to the survey rooms.
So I mean, I wasn't planning on going, but if you wanted to, I would, so, but, okay. Uh, now, the next item, and I had spoken with the chairperson, I haven't been before John, when this occurred, but I, I'm actually scheduled to be on vacation the week of the 20th to the 24th. Wasn't necessarily planned until after the holiday on the summer 5th, and I did ask John about that and got approval. Uh, so I'm technically not going to be here, but I will have everything ready for the meetings and all the other documentations, or whatever you need. Uh, the only question I did have in addition to, in to that, as you initially had talked about making that second meeting in January, uh, your initial discussion for the community veteran grant and the, and the extending of that to the nonprofits like you did last year. Most of that discussion always came from the commission anyway, but do you want to still schedule it on the 21st? Have me just send whatever you did last year for your discussion, or, you know, was there a plan, desire? Do you just want to wait until the 1st of February?
I don't see it as a discussion. I mean, we need to discuss. Just, just, so I'll, there are some parameters that we need to set up and need to discuss those.
Okay, so I'll include that on the agenda and I'll obviously send you what we had where to lead off last year, knowing that I, I know that you have some intent of, based on last year's discussion, of trying to clarify things like you just said, so.
So Friday before you are on vacation, you'll have the agenda in place. So I'll have the agenda being placed, all materials will be there. Uh, Monday is a holiday, so technically I'm not going to be, I had to, I still have money. Monday is a holiday, it's pushing, but then literally I'm traveling out of state after the 21st, so. And like I said, it wasn't originally planned, because I don't like to schedule meetings, but this is the way it felt, so. But yeah, no, I'll add on, and that's all I have for my. Okay, uh, Sam, this next agenda item, that's an opportunity for the commissioner to comment on things you'd like to see perhaps in future agendas. So, you know, whenever that lead there. If you want to discuss perhaps agenda items you'd like to present, you know, you can come to the chair anytime and request to have something put on the agenda. If the chair says no, that's not appropriate issue, then you can bring that to the full board at the meeting. But more often than not, if you, if you want something on the agenda, it gets put on there, this is a real objection for the chair. So if you think of something that you'd like to see on the agenda to discuss, then get in touch with me or Michael.
Or you can send it to both, right?
Right. You can, I just email both of us. Yeah, but Michael, it needs to be, to Michael's, from Michael's desk by Wednesday, Michael.
So we set the, the deadline for Wednesday at five. So we end the day on Wednesday before the following, Tuesday, in this case, it'll be Wednesday. And we do allow per cause, so that in the policy, one of the policies I sent you, the rules, you'll see that there is kind of a potential exemption there, but we don't rely on it. So I mean, generally, we try to get that deadline.
What happens is that once Michael publishes the agenda, that we don't allow publishing it permanently. So if, if something comes up urgent, it's got to come to the board, you'll still notify. We should be notified that this emergency needs to be discussed, so that we can have it ready for the agenda, but it doesn't get on the precedent agenda. So having been here first meeting, do you have any comments you'd like to see for future agendas? Joe?
We still have to do Michael's review. And I've got, uh, all Paul's, uh, input and everything he did for it, but since it came up, like that last November, December time period, we're trying to get all the stuff with the property done. Like, to me, like, that was like an.
Still valuing your consent with your contract.
So it did, it was supposed to be back in August, and we had, or, yeah, I think it was August, and we had, again, it's a lot of the same stuff. It, it just kind of got dropped. And then I brought it up in November. Well, I had actually mentioned it in November because I was, after the election, because I knew Paul was leaving, and I said, you know, would you, you know, be able to do this? And he said, well, you know, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, and then that's when the, basically during the meeting that you said, give me your information, and I'll, I'll.
So it's been done last August. Already formally, yeah.
So.
And we don't have Paul here anymore to.
Yeah, but I've got it.
He did spend, Paul did submit his.
Yeah, I've got it.
All things being equal, if we didn't have all that ARPA and the building and everything else going on, we were going to try to get it done by December before he left. He's not going to be at next week, so.
Yeah, so I was thinking, yeah, so the one thing I want to ask you is whether, do you want me to try to coordinate and get feedback from department heads and that on it, or do you want us, because that's what we did.
We did, that's what you did last.
Or do you want?
Laura Paul did it.
Reach out to the department heads?
No, let me, let me sit down with Michael and see what we did last year, and try to follow suit.
Ken, I'll, I'll send you Paul's stuff that he sent me. And maybe like the second meeting, that there, second meeting, there should all be six months.
Six months.
Has Sam been set up with an email address?
Yes. It's basically his name and everything else, but I, I can copy you on it. I thought we had copied you on one or two other already, but I'll, I'll send it to you.
Anything else, Jim? And I have no comments. Okay, move to adjourn. Motion made to adjourn. Do I hear it started then?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.